All right, now we're live. All right, welcome everyone. I'm Tim Skagans, Chair of the Shastberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:31 on Monday, December 7, 2020. First, I need to check with the board. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
No. All right, hearing none, we will move on. Does anyone have any announcements? I have a couple. We have been talking about a kennel bylaw. It has come up that our bylaws are silent on the subject of dog boarding, and it's the select board's belief that dog boarding is something that could be permitted in a rural town like Shastberry. The Planning Commission has looked into it, came up with some draft bylaws, held their first hearing on the subject. There was some good feedback from the public who felt that more regulation was needed than was in the draft bylaws, and the Planning Commission has decided that they want to set that aside for the time being, and give them time to study it more and look at a more restrictive bylaw. The consequence of that is that there will not be a bylaw change for kennels on the March ballot. Also, let me say, let me announce that pursuant to our appointment policy, we have openings on the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board coming up this March. And off the top of my head, I've forgotten what they are exactly, but if you're interested in serving the town in either of those regards, please let us know. I do know for a fact that the DRB, the Development Review Board, has an opening in their primary membership, and they have a history of liking to carry alternates, which they have not been able to find for some time, so there's definitely some openings there. I also mentioned that Joe Barber and Tim Skagans are coming up for reelection. Joe Barber is ending, coming up on the end of his two-year term. Tim Skagans on the end of his three-year term. I'm also going to announce just personally that Tim Skagans is not running again for the Select Board.
Wow.
I have, I have decided that eight years is enough. It's time to pass the torch. I've enjoyed my time here, but I've decided that's where it will end. Okay, that takes us to the premiere event of the evening, which is the Town of Shastberry honoring Ken Coonrad and his service to the town. Welcome, Ken. Glad you could be here. I want to first flash up the plaque that we have had made to honor your service to the town. I'm sure you all can't see that. I'll say a little bit more about what it says in a minute. In honoring Ken Coonrad, I want you to realize that Ken Coonrad has served this community, his church, the schools, the state, the country in ways that I can't begin to enumerate. We got a list of what Ken's life has involved in terms of public service, and it is, is a long list. I've got three pages here, and I'm just, again, we're going to talk about Ken's service to the Town of Shastberry tonight. We're not going to talk about his military service in the Air Force. We're not going to talk about his career in the federal government. We're not going to talk about his service to his church, which is incredibly extensive. We're not going to talk about him being the State Chaplain or any number of things that he's done with the Boy Scouts, the Masons, the Shiners. Those will have to go for another day, but I will mention that Ken's cumulative body of service has not gone unnoticed, and he has received several awards. In 2018, the International Alliance Club Foundation's Melvin Jones Fellowship Award went to Ken Coonrad as a dedicated humanitarian. In 2018, he was recognized by the National Grange with a Public Service Award. And in 2015, the Shastberry Historical Society recognized him as an ordinary hero. In terms of what Ken has done in the town, it's a, it's a shorter list, but not, not without merit. He has been a trustee of public funds. He's been on the Select Board. He served on the Sidewalk Committee, and I've heard from a number of people that was a, just about a full-time job getting that sidewalk in, and we extended that sidewalk, and it nearly broke the whole Select Board getting it done. So no small achievement leading the Sidewalk Committee. He's been our zoning administrator. He's been Assistant Water Superintendent, and most recently, he retired as the Superintendent of Cemeteries. So, Ken, I just can't say enough about how much we appreciate you, what you've done for the town, and wish we had more people with your dedication to public service. And I invite, I invite you to say a few words if you'd like to, and remind you that somebody knows you're muted. There you go.
Thank you very much, Chairman Tim. All I can say is thank you. You've kind of blown me away. I've enjoyed just about almost every day that I've, that I've shared my my knowledge, my abilities for the Town of Shastberry. I grew up in Shastberry since I was three years old up on Rod and Gun Club Road, and it was great to come back here in 1986 and begin to give back to Shastberry for everything they've given to me. So I thank you guys with regard to the past 10 years. I just want to say thank you to the Select Board. You know, back then, we decided that it was time we dedicate some time to our cemeteries and try to get them back in, in good condition. And I think we've done that. There's still some work to be done, but a lot of work has been done, and it hasn't all been me. I want to thank the, I want to thank Dave along with the Select Board. He's been a great counselor, good boss, one of my bosses. And I want to thank the Cemetery Commission under the leadership of Ellie and Kathy. Everything I asked for, I got. The Select Board, the Select, I'm sorry, the Town Clerk had a lot of ideas which we, which we instilled. And most of all, the town crew, they've been absolutely great, just were there whenever I asked for something. And I guess most of all, the general public. There have been 100 to one accolades versus complaints, and so it's been absolutely great. I do want to point out a lot of help from, from Austin Martinka, who we hired last year. And a lot of things I couldn't do alone, I was able to do along with Austin because of his, his, his youth and his strength. And I appreciate that very much. And also, Henry came along a couple of times with his, with his equipment and helped us do things we couldn't do otherwise. So, guys, I really, really appreciate it. I've enjoyed it very, very much. And just thanks a lot. That's about it.
Well, thank you, Ken, and I will deliver this plaque to Cole Hall, and if you can see your way to stop by there sometime and pick it up, that would be great.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, next up is the Treasures Report. Melanie Dexter. Melanie, if you're talking, you're muted.
Thanks, guys. Talk to you later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. Sorry about that. Somehow I got canceled out. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's look at the, well, look at the cash flow from November.
Yes, I will bring that up now.
November's obviously the biggest month, and you'll see some pretty big numbers. What I really want to talk about is a doubt at the bottom, though. You can look at the budget comparison versus last year. So you can see that our, that, that Dave has been really pinching every penny. We're running about $100,000 behind in expenditures behind last year. That's sort of the, you know, just the austerity light that we're practicing around right now. This is because of the, still the big question mark about delinquent taxes, although it looks to me like it's not going to be significantly worse. It'll be a little bit worse than last year, but not all that much. And I hope to have a better handle on that maybe for the next, next meeting. I'll do a report on delinquent taxes. But as of right now, I would say that they're running probably not even as much as $100,000 behind, behind last year. So, or I guess, yeah, $100,000 better than last year, worse than last year, that is to say. So that's pretty much all I have to say about this. It was all, it was all taxes last month. Do you have any other questions about that? That now's the time. Or you can look at the December one, if you want to look at that, for the more up-to-date bottom line.
Okay, one second.
Not much going on, actually. I mean, right now, the, the activity is in water payments, so we can just glance at this real fast. That, those government grants, you see the $48,000 there. That's got some pilot money. Oh, there's also another pilot payment came in. There's some mysterious payments coming from Montpelier that, you know, we'll take them. We're not quite sure what they are, but they're higher than they've been in the past. And every, every penny is welcome, obviously. The, the state has these ACHs appear in the checking account. You never, you often don't know what they are exactly because they, they code them very mysteriously, but we've gotten these grants, and it's nice. So you see, we've got a huge cash balance. Don't fall in love with that. It will almost all be gone next month because you're going to sign some, some checks for, the warrant for the school payments will, will happen, and then that will get pretty much wiped out. Any questions about any of that?
Melanie, is there a danger of taking that money without knowing where, where it came from or what it is for? That we would get stuck paying it back?
I don't think so. I mean, it's not, it's, it's just some kind of a, I think mostly it's probably going to turn out to be either payments in lieu of taxes or some highway grants, wouldn't you say, Dave?
Yes, and a lot of times we wind up getting these checks from the state with no explanation, and it follows up a couple of days later.
Yeah, that's probably what's going to happen. And as with the mail delivery being iffy at best lately, it gets, can take more than even a couple of days. So if you want me to follow up next time, I hope I'll have better information about it, and I'll make a note to tell you what they were. But, but there's, there's no, not such thing as accepting them or not accepting them because they just appear. The money just appears there in the checking account. If you want to look at the reserve account, Tim, that's, that's basically going to show you. It's just water. All the water payments came in. People were really great about it. Again, thank you to everybody who used the Dropbox. It worked out great. And I got a huge number of online payments with water this time. I think people are much more comfortable using online for water than they are for, for taxes for understandable reasons, although I will remind people that you can do the e-check option. It's just $1.50 for the bank transfer, which is, you know, practically like postage these days. So if you look at the 260 line, that's mostly, well, yeah, that's water that came in, plus something else. What is that? Did we get some kind of a grant or something, Dave? That's too much money. I can't remember now.
On the water line?
Yeah.
I would have to check that and look at that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's something else going on. I have to look at the detail, but anyway, so the, the payments came in great. They were due a week or so ago, but some are still coming in through the mail. Any questions about any of that? As of the end of this month, we'll have all of the transfers to reserves that were voted in the last town meeting, but those haven't happened yet, but they'll happen later this month. But you see a lot of negative numbers there. That's shouldn't be alarming because those are just going to be the transfers.
Good. Any questions for Melanie? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. You may notice we're doing things a little bit out of order. We wanted to, out of our normal order, I should say, according to the published agenda. We wanted to set aside some time for people to hear the philosophy on our budget and what the details of it are this year. As we all know, it's a little bit of a, of a different year, and so we are, we are calling for public comment several times tonight. We're first, we have recently instituted a policy of allowing public comments at the beginning and the end so that people can steer us the way they want to and then comment on what we have done at the end of the meeting. We stuck in another one tonight after the budget so that people can respond to anything that they hear and want to let us know about the budget. So to kick that off, I would go to David Keardan, our Town Administrator, and ask him to start us off talking, probably walk us through the budget summary that he provided us in writing that lays out the philosophy of this year and the major changes or major items of interest, I should say.
Okay, I'm going to just share the screen because we did have some of this on the webpage over the weekend. Of course, I changed things over the weekend, so we have some different ways we're looking at things. Again, just for review from the last meeting we had, the object was to keep the tax rate as flat as possible going into the next year. But we do run pretty lean on things, so there isn't a lot of flex here. Hold on while I try and get my screen to work here so I can read it. That's too small. Okay, so just reviewing some of the items that are going to increase the budgets this year. Insurance and bonds, which is all the town's insurance. I had mentioned the fire department communications. The state police requires a fee for emergency communications now. That represents one quarter of what it will eventually be. It's going to go up every year, the next four years. The employee health insurance, as it does every year, went up about $5,800. Equipment maintenance has to be adjusted, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Garage utilities, the fire truck reserve, and the equipment we serve, both of which have been planned for years to go up by that amount this year, and that is what keeps us from having to borrow and pay interest on new equipment. The decreases to the budget is where I made some changes over the weekend. The big one to start with is our contract with our uniform rental and cleaning company is expiring at the end of '21. And what I'm proposing to do is not renew that contract and instead issue a clothing allowance of $500 per person to each of our six DPW crewmen. That alone will save us $7,000 a year because these contracts, you can't enter them in less than five years, and frankly, well, it just doesn't make any sense to me. It just isn't worth having these things for five years at a time. It's just too much money. The rest of it pretty much remains the same. I have to move something here. Excuse me. It's in my way. Okay, we're going to, the three reserve funds I talked about last week, Park Cemetery Memorial, that's staying, staying the same. We will just skip the payments this year. All them have funds that can be used to keep everything going. The thing that I really did this week to generate some money to reinstate some pay increases for next year was to reduce the paving budget once again, the paving reserve budget. We're going to reduce it 27,000, which will bring us down to 18,000 for fiscal '22. That combined with this year's amount, which we're not spending because no grants came from the state this year, we'll go into fiscal '22 with more money than we ever had before for paving. So the grant that was approved for this year for paving, we will get next year hopefully unless something else happens with the state budget, and we'll be able to fund that and move forward from there. Looking forward and discussing this with Mike. Going into fiscal '23 with the regular amount put back in the reserves, we'll be able to take on another grant, which we're looking for, for to, to finish White Creek Road from Rollins Road West, and then using the balance of the paving reserve and the Class III road reserve to redo Birch Hill Road, the entrance to Hidden Valley, and the top of Twitchell Hill. So altering paving this year won't have a significant impact on moving forward because we are just saving what's available this year, and we don't have anything to spend it on because most of the projects are too big. And even the ones like Birch Hill, Twitchell, and that, that are not roads we can get grants for, it would take several years of savings, and that's kind of what the Class III is for. The Class III roads and whether they're paved or dirt, that's what that fund is for. And because we can do that, we can bring things back down and look at reinstating pay raises for the town. I'd originally thought of freezing wages for this year, but in reviewing projections for next year, I mean, the inflation rate for the region is about 1.1% for this year, ending for fiscal '20. But there's already projections for '21 to wind up the year closer to 2019 at 2.3% inflation. So when you consider, we're talking about July of '21 through June of '22, not providing at least enough to keep up with the cost of living, it's kind of difficult for, for some of our people. So I try to work that back in so we wouldn't have to have what amounts to a pay cut for, for this year. The budget here, let me move ahead here a little bit. Sorry. I'm going to take this down. Okay, the tax rate effects for '22, and we'll can go into this in more detail. The actual increases would be less than 1% over the fiscal '21 budget. Comes out to about $19,000. The actual tax rate increase is 1 cent, 1.0101. And for every $100,000 valuation, that's $10.10, or for a quarter million dollar house, it would be $25.50 for the year in an increase. And then importantly, as you look forward, because we do have to bring what we cut here back, especially in the reserve funds. We could bring Cole Hall back completely, the paving reserve back completely, and gradually bring back Park Cemetery Memorial and the level and ceiling. And bringing back, as you see on the screen there, would be about 1 cent in the fiscal '23 budget. And as you, as you just saw from how we're going this year, we really are being tight on things, but moving forward. Part of that drop in expenses this year, though, is reflected by the fact that we didn't get any, any grants. So we're not building roads. We're not paving, things like that, that would chew up some money. But I think, I think this will leave us in pretty good shape going forward. Let me just show you another breakdown of this. Hold on one second. Go to one second. The computer's scrolling a little slowly. Sorry. While this is hopefully loading, I'll point out that one other thing I did by rearranging things in the budget was able to up each part of the maintenance budget for the trucks, each piece of equipment up to over $3,000 and reviewing past years and everything. And this was brought up last week that we had to keep up the maintenance, and perhaps we didn't have enough. And I tended to agree with that in reviewing it over the week and added about $1,000 more onto each truck. Do you have the Shastberry expenditure like pie chart in front of you now?
No.
Yes or no?
I'm still looking at the previous document.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay. Well, we're all learning here, so pardon my flubbing with this, but
There it is.
Okay, so you can see this now. I just tried to show you the shares that each department will have with the proposed budget. And as you can see, DPW, as normal, takes up more than half the budget. And that includes the reserve funds. Their reserve funds are included in that number, whereas transfers to non-DPW reserves are shown at the bottom there at 5%. So it's pretty well spread around. We're keeping up with everything while keeping the expenses down as much as we possibly can. I can go through the line item, or we can have questions from here.
I'm not thinking we need to go through every line of the budget. Let's see, first see if we have questions or comments from the Select Board.
I'd like to, with the, everything with the national and state and everything the way it is. And I realize that maybe I'm crazy to even ask it. I think Dave has done a really, really good job with the budget like he always does, but I'd like to see zero growth for nothing. At least if nothing else, it's, and we're trying to do the best we can with, with the epidemic and everything else, I just, just have nothing to, maybe try to make people feel better because we're not really sure what this school's going to do. I mean, they're most of the School's gonna do. I mean, they're most of the budget anyway, most of the taxes anyways. And. They don't seem to ever try to. Edit anything back at all. And maybe they can't. I just like. Feel it.
Other comments?
I I think that's. That's a good goal, but I don't think it's. Don't think it's practical. I think people understand a 1% increase. What we have to do is look at what health insurance has gone up and all that sort of stuff. I I don't want to get in the hat. Keeping up with everything else, but. I don't think people are going to be upstanding.
Yeah, I think. I think Dave has done a good job here. We certainly did our best to hold the line on the budget, but as he said, we run a leaship. In regular times and there's just not a lot of. Fat to cut anywhere and if we. I feel like if we cut any further. We would be risking providing necessary services. I for one. Quibbled with Dave about cutting the paving reserve because I feel like paving is so expensive that. We need to save for it every year because even if we're not going to spend it this year, when it comes time to pave. It eats up money fast, but. He has convinced me that we can get through the next couple of years on the things that need to get done. And. Not make as large a contribution to the paving reserve this year.
I I've got a few questions on, I've gone through line by line and I've just got a couple of questions for clarification. Delinquent tax collector, obviously he his salary is what collects. The April over when he collects and passes through taxes. But do we have to pay his FICA? Is that what that is, Dave?
That's correct. We pay the FICA. We've paid it. Since before I was here. Yeah. I'm not even sure if it's statutory or not. It's just always been that way.
Yeah.
My next comment is is that in the listers, we've talked about them not. Necessary for them to do their job because we have a professional doing it now. Will be in for another year. Is that what you've got?
What we have is on the professional services, that'll be our NIMRIC professional assessor. Who assists the listeners. The wage is actually divisioned by three. Each listener is paid. Some grand sum that I can't recall off the top of my head, but it's it's not a lot. For their hours because the university's offices open. Currently by phone or email. Two days a week they're here, one or the other or both are here six days a week, six hours a week, not six days a week. And there's some extra time during the course of the year. And again, like I said, that's actually. For three listeners, we only have two now. So it only breaks down to about 4,500 a person.
Okay. But in the past, we've talked about maybe not having them, but we're still going to have them this year. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. We we had talked and I talked with the listeners about it in the past when they were thinking maybe they would be. Leaving, which. Apparently that's not on the table any longer or not in the foreseeable future, so. We can continue on as we have been. Having NIMRIC there with professional assessors is is very valuable to us. At some point, when the current listeners. Discuss leaving, then the board can discuss putting it to the vote because you can. Move to have appointed listeners and not elected listeners. So right now we have two very long serving listeners. So the kind of the wall.
Absolutely. Fantastic job. They're very faithful.
Barry, can I get you to mute so that we can hear your conversation?
Hey Barry, Barry?
Yes.
Can hear you if you want to mute.
Can you mute please? Thank you.
In the animal control, we give. Give her a stipend. Does it thing? Do we have to pay her above that? Is that what the wages are for animal control? ACO wages are $600. And then it has the monthly stipend underneath that for $6,600.
Yeah, I mean, what happens at animal control is Tracy really doesn't charge us for the time she does. What she does. What we're really paying for here is access to a kennel. Which I discovered is very difficult around here, so. That's the value when the entire thing is having access to that kennel.
And I I agree with you on the on the getting rid of the uniform cleaning and rental. But I think we should be buying the shirts. Would that be? Part of that plus?
Well, what we're doing now is.
We would give them $500 to wash for washing.
Well, it's the 500 would be the clothing allowance to buy jeans, shirts. Whatever they choose to do with it. You can buy a bit of clothing for that because there's also the $100. That we give them for steel-toed boots every year. And we also provide all their hoodies, the T-shirts, the reflective gear, the safety gear and all that, so. About the only thing they would have to buy themselves. It would be would be a shirt if they wanted to wear it. Most of the guys have to tell you currently right now, we might see them with the gray shirts with reflective stripes on them. Really only two of them are wearing those shirts on a regular basis. The other guys are wearing the T-shirts, the hoodies or whatever. So it really wouldn't have any impact and some of them are wearing their own jeans now because. You like to go out and buy jeans, you're going to be comfortable and I guess, you know, if you're going to be working all day in them. So I think it's a lot cheaper. And I find these rental companies are just like out of control. And 10,000 for rentals is, and that's the old contract. So this is just not. Reasonable. And the feedback in the crew is they're perfectly content with this. Give them the money to go buy their clothes and. As I said, with the boots, the hoodies, the T-shirts that we buy routinely now anyway. They won't affect them.
Sure, it's something. Something that was uniform, had the logo on it and all that sort of stuff, so.
You're breaking up pretty bad or?
That there was professionalism in their appearance.
Well, yeah, I got the part about professionalism. There would be standardization. I mentioned that on the side today. I saw with Mike, people aren't going to walk in with their. Or whatever T-shirt or shirt or something, you're going to have to look professionally. You're representing the town.
Okay. And. I noticed that in past years, we've used a little over 60,000 in chloride. You've got just 60,000 for chloride. Do you think that's? Have we learned to use it more efficiently and so on and so forth?
Yeah, the actual in in 20 was 67,000, which was significantly over what we did, but we were really, again, this is one of those. Very aggressive moves towards. Getting the roads fixed up and we really were packing it down and Michael and I have talked about this and. He was actually talking about reducing the chloride a little bit because they have learned. How to do it efficiently. The new material we moved to is better. And I think everybody's noticed that on the gravel roads. So I want to keep it the same for this year and we are getting smarter at using it. And we're in a pretty good position right now because. A good chunk of when we would use it, starting in June through November, we've only spent 28,000 on it. So we really won't pick up chloride again until May. So that's only two months.
The. Under cemetery, the cemetery committee assistant, is that the town clerk? Is that the work that she's doing?
No, that's been rolled into her pay as of, when did we do that? Last year, the year before? The new cemetery assistant is Mr. Martinka. Who who works part-time to help out in maintenance. He also works DPW part-time also.
Yeah. And. When's our contract for the cemetery? Services come up? That wasn't a three-year contract and when is that in?
It's next year.
Okay, so so we're good at the 27,000?
Yeah. Because it'll bid in December. To start. The following year, so that'll be in the fiscal 23 budget. Any adjustment to that?
And in the community appropriation. There's a lot of blanks. Does that mean they have it?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is the blanks. The blanks are because I have not heard back from them yet. But I did speak to like the Bennington area VNA. That's going to be the same amount. I heard from them over the weekend. BCCD has been the same amount forever. I'm not quite sure why I haven't heard from Katie yet. Park McCullough, I'm still waiting to hear something. And then I think the only other one was Sunrise Family Resource Center. Which I still haven't heard from either. Oh, and Shire is WBTN. And I've emailed all of them as of the fourth once again. And I haven't heard from any of them.
And so when's the deadline?
Well, the deadline was December 1st, but we traditionally always waffle past that as we have once again. Which I don't mind. Most of them are in. And only two. Have increased. That would be Perrin Recreations.
Okay.
And the Martha Canfield Library. And we have one new one which. Sorry, the name just went right out of my head, but they will be here on the 21st. To explain as required by the board why they want an increase and the other group coming in as a new group.
Okay. That's the end of my list.
Okay.
Other comments from the select board?
Well, I agree that Dave has done a great job. My my biggest concern is next year. When things. We finally hopefully settle down. And we're going to have to make some decisions about cutting. Ken, I agree with you, but. I think right now we're talking about cost of living and trying to. Keep the budget as low as possible, but I think next year. It's going to have to be cut. So.
Yeah, when I was doing this, I was I was looking at it as. To keep it as low this year because. Really, we're not in sync with anything here. We're going to, people have to be saving now to make this payment in November.
Yeah.
So this year we're is where people really need to break because people, some people aren't working now.
Yeah.
And I think any shortfall this year will be taken care of by the money we will eventually get from the feds. And trickle down to the state. There is a question about 22, the actual year of 22. And where we'll be and whether or not will we cover it right, but. We will be seeing that and we'll have, we will have to take that into account in fiscal 23. To see where everything is.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to open it up to the public if they have comments on the budget first. I realize now that I. Talked about it and then skipped right past the initial public comments so I could get right to the budget because I was so excited to get there. But if first let me ask if anyone has any comments on related to the budget and then I will. Invite general public comments that I should have done earlier. All right, hearing none. Are there any general public comments? See a few members of the public here. All right, then we will move on. Unless. Dave, did you have anything else you wanted to say? What about when you want us to finalize this budget?
Well, I think we can sit till the next meeting and maybe something else will pop into my head. But we should finalize it at the next meeting. I think that's enough time for everyone to look at it again. I'll have these revisions. We can put these revisions on the Dropbox, the public Dropbox for the next meeting so that people can look at it. It's while they're putting drafts on because these went up Friday and I was already changing them come Saturday and Sunday, so. It's hard to keep up when you're putting graphs up.
All right, the next question up is about town meeting in March and. We we need to think about the public safety situation that we're going to be living in in March. There's every reason to believe that. We still will be in the midst of a pandemic and it will not be safe. To gather 100 people together in the school gym to vote on the budget and other questions. The state legislature has made an exception for this year and it is for this year only and it does not change the general situation, but for this year. They are allowing select boards to. Vote to do town meeting by Australian ballot. So instead of having a budget vote and any other questions that would normally be voted on the floor. On the floor, they would be put on the Australian ballot along with select board elections and that type of thing. Our state rep David Durfee, who I see is here tonight, has alerted me that. This, the legislature is considering. Another mitigation step that they might allow. When they meet in January, they they might consider allowing town meeting to be postponed. Until later in the spring and I'll let David clarify that if you would like to. So that's another possibility. My my opinion is. I I don't know that I can, I see us being in a whole lot different situation a few months later than we will be in March. We've been hearing a lot on the news about a vaccine. The the reports, the estimates are still that it will not be generally available until. Late, mid to late next year and so it's. I don't think it's foreseeable that we will be out of danger by any time in the spring, but David, do you have? Any further clarification on on the delay consideration?
Hi Tim and everyone else. Good evening. I don't really, Tim, I think that. First of all, the. The legislature is not in session yet, as I think you all know, so we had a preliminary caucus meeting. Last week and it was it was mentioned that this is one of the first pieces of legislation that the. That the House wants to try and and move so that any town that feels. That it really doesn't want to give up the idea of the floor meeting and the vote in the floor meeting might have another option. And that would be to wait, wait to some undetermined time. The towns would determine it. Further further into 2021, calendar year 2021. When perhaps it might be safe to have. Everyone or those who want to attend, you know, show up in the in the cafeteria of the school or some other space. everyone or those who want to attend, show up in the cafeteria of the school or some other space. So it's, right now, it's, that's the idea, and towns that don't think that that's the way they want to go, will have the option of moving to Australian ballot. And that's, that's because the legislature before it adjourned this summer, looking ahead, made that provision, so that's already in place.
And I want to emphasize, because I've spoken to a number of people and there's been some confusion, even yet, that this vote that the select board would make to hold the Australian ballot in lieu of town meeting in 2021 is an emergency measure. It only applies to 2021, it does not change how a town generally votes on the budget. And in our case, that is, in general, changing that is a question that would have to come up at town meeting. So let's just be clear, we're not talking about changing that for all time, we're talking about changing it as an emergency measure in 2021 only.
I would just add, somebody pointed out that it would introduce, moving the day of town meeting would introduce complications like terms, select board terms that end at town meeting. How would, how would that be handled? So there would need to be some work done to figure that out, and there may be other, other things too. If, you know, any town decided to go that route.
Dave?
Hi, Eric.
Would you expect that if they did pass, if somebody says, well, let's do it the end of September, that
Art, we are not hearing you very well.
Do you do you expect that they would be, okay?
Yeah, I think maybe there's a problem with the connection, but if the question was, would they, would the legislature allow it to be extended, you know, past June 30th? I would be surprised, although I honestly don't know, but that would seem to make make things far too complicated, given that there's a, you know, a budget question and the budget year starts in July 1st. So I don't know what the, what the current thinking is, but I would, I would be surprised, I don't think I would be able to support that without hearing more about it.
Yes, thank you, that was my question.
Okay.
Tim, could you tell me what it would look like? Would we, would we have an online question and answer the night before, or just? Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, I forgot to mention that, as I understand the emergency legislation, an informational meeting by Zoom or teleconference of some kind would be a requirement if we decided to hold the actual voting by Australian ballot. So yeah, we would have, when we normally have town meeting, we would have a Zoom. That would be everything that we would do in town meeting, except the actual voting. You know, if we had bylaws, we would explain the bylaws, we would explain the budget, we would take questions on the budget, that sort of thing, by teleconference.
So there would be no power of that assembly online to change the outcome of the budget?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So anybody who had anything that they wanted to talk about or discuss should be doing it in these meetings that we're having now?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you do make another point, which can be considered, is that we could hold town meeting by Zoom and attempt to vote by Zoom as well. I consider that fraught with peril, considering that when, you know, the five of us get together, things go fine, and we get five members of the public in, we're we're all over the place, so trying to accommodate 100 people on a Zoom, let everyone get their voice heard and do a roll call vote on every question, I think would be
No, that would be insane.
At best.
Yeah, that would be crazy, that would be crazy. So people, so I'm wondering if we have responsibility to, well, if we, we vote tonight, then we need to let the public know that if they have any questions or input into the current budget, that they do it now, or do it after we vote?
Certainly, that's true, that's generally true. But we're, you know, we're actually, we are taking power away from the public with this move. At town meeting, they can, they can change what they advise us to change by a vote of the citizens. Here, we're inviting their input, but we're not giving them the power to make a change that we don't agree to. Right, it is, it is less interactive, I guess you could say, government than we would be used to at town meeting, where the budget can be changed. The budget amount, anyway, can be changed on the floor, that would not be possible, this would be the town would only have the option of voting the budget up or down. So yes, if it would, it would behoove people to let their opinions be known ahead of time, so that we can change the budget to their liking.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm thinking is that, you know, when
One second there, Tony, Art, is that you on the phone?
I'm sorry.
Yes, it is, and I just got off from Zoom. I just canceled out completely, so I'm just on the phone now.
Okay. We can hear you much better.
A lot better. Thank you.
We were getting feedback there when you had the Zoom going?
Yeah, I just canceled it out.
So my, so, so when, when, what's the final date that we have to approve the budget?
Well, Tony, we can move that out, we can, actually, I was just looking at that as you were talking. The second meeting in January is the 18th. That would be the last possible moment, because we have to go to the printer.
So we have, so we have a month, so we need to notify the public that if they have input into the budget, they need to do it within the month.
Yeah, and that's why I'm trying to keep updates on the link that's on our webpage. It's gonna, people are gonna have to follow it, because it'll change.
Yeah.
Probably won't change much after tonight, but, you know, then we could have input back in, and that would give us at least two, if not three, meetings to take input from the public.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because, you know, there are people out there who need to voice their opinion and now's the time to do it, so we need to let them know that, yeah.
Yep.
Art, why don't I make a motion, and then we can have discussion, but we really shouldn't be discussing without a motion, so I guess I'd like to make a motion that we, we take the option of having town meeting, the budget done by Australian ballot, with the stipulation that we have as many informational meetings as possible until the budget has to go to vote.
All right, we have a motion from Art to move town meeting vote to Australian ballot as an emergency measure in 2021, with the provision that we make every effort to invite public comment on the budget.
Second.
Before that vote, seconded by Ken Harrington. Discussion. Tony, I was getting from what you were saying, that you thought you might want to wait on deciding this question. Or you were just making the point that you wanted to make sure we got, we waited on deciding the budget.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we ought to wait till the last minute, so that people can then have their input into, you know, at least voice their opinion about it. And somehow, you know, we get good coverage in the banner, so I'm thinking that people would then be alerted and also the website to then be able to have their input into the budget. That's all.
Okay. Other discussion?
Does the, does the budget go onto the website? Is that something that's on the website, or would it be too confusing to make sure it's always up to date?
Well, a draft is on there now, everything that I've sent to you, all the board members, is in the public domain on the website.
Okay.
But after tonight, I think I've run out of places to poke on the budget. So I think we'll just have a final version that can be up there, so that everybody can read it and see the presentation and make comments over the next three meetings. Comments and suggestions.
I think three meetings is sufficient, if we talk about it and, and if we can get the banner to, to do an article on it, okay?
Okay, they are not here tonight, but anytime they have missed one of our meetings, I get an email from, from them the next day, asking for the meeting recording, so I expect that they will cover the meeting. All right, hearing no other discussion, all in favor of voting the town meeting vote by Australian ballot as an emergency measure in 2021 only, with the indicated provisions to publicize and receive comment from the public on the budget. Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right, that motion carries by a vote of 500. Okay, we'll move on. Dave, looks like some routine business here, Nemrick contract?
Yes, this is the annual end user software license agreement, which is addressed to the treasurer. I just need the board's approval to have a treasurer sign this. It's basically, it's the 5,000 fee every year, and for that, they maintain the system. And we have quite a number of modules, we use the General Ledger, Tax Administration, Accounts Payable, Payroll, Animal Licensing, Voting, and it goes on for a ways, it's all the different programs that we lease from them, and they provide support from. Every year, we sign this, basically.
All right, is there a motion to allow the clerk to renew the Nemrick software contract?
The treasurer?
I'm sorry, the treasurer to renew the Nemrick software contract.
A vote.
Moved by Ken. Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor of allowing the treasurer to renew the Nemrick software contract, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that motion carries 500.
The next one.
Solid Waste Agreement.
Yeah, this is just a renewal, as you all know, we're part of the County Solid Waste Alliance. This is just reaffirming and renewing the inter-local contract. This is every town in the county is a member of this. It sets the rules for the organization, which I represent the town in. It sets up how many votes, based on population each town gets, splitting it up amongst all the towns. We get two votes on the board. And just basically, the schedule of our meetings, what the president does, what the vice president does, what we expect from BRCRC. It's just basically renewal of the agreement we've had for a long time. It's been here for a long before I got here.
Do we do this annually?
No, this is every several years.
Okay. Do you know what the term on this one is?
You would ask me the one question, I don't know the answer to. You know, I think it's kind of open. If you want, I could bring this back next time, I don't have an answer to that off the top of my head.
Well, it seems odd that it would be expired and they wouldn't have a term in the contract.
I agree, I just don't remember where it is in here. I could bring it back for the next one.
Yeah, just to avoid us having to repeat ourselves.
Yeah.
Educate how, how long the term of the contract is.
Yeah, you're right, I should have had that there. There are no minutes for this meeting, I think we took our a minute recorder by surprise by having a special meeting last week, and she didn't get them done.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that takes us to warrants, which we do have.
And we got some big ones here.
I printed them out, but I didn't look at them, the one I did look at was not big, but that's not the one on top here, so let's go with that. First up, I have payroll warrant number 11,
I moved.
To approve from Tony, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number 11, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So payroll warrant number 11, $28,000.968 is approved, 500. And next I have a water warrant, which I believe is the water bill for town offices. Water warrant number one, $298.
I moved.
Motion to approve from Tony. Seconded by Ken, discussion on paying our water bill. All in favor of approving water warrant number one, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? So water warrant number one, $298 is approved, 500.
$298, is it?
No, $298, this is just water usage at Coal Hall and the firehouse.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, not the bill for the, for bulk water.
We'd be doing good if you were paying us $298. Don't worry, the next one.
I have a check warrant number 19 for a measly $4,154,179.05.
I moved.
Tony, seconded by Ken, you guys are in charge if this goes up. So the, the big item here, of course, is well, I guess there are a couple of them. Mount Anthony Union High School, taxes that we collected for them, And for Southwest Vermont School District, this would be the elementary school district, we collect taxes for them, And the rest is just piddly. And the rest is just piddly stuff. $7,000 to Bennington County Regional Commission, $2,600 to Bennington County Sheriff. $7,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $7,600 to Michael Chianowski for a tax refund. $8,000 to TAM for garbage services. $30,000 to VLC for casualty and property insurance. $1,100 to Wallingford Crush Dome, is that, is that gravel, or is that something else?
Gravel.
And it looks to be the major items, I see $600 to Wex Bank, I don't know what that is.
Wex is, it's a service we join that allows us to purchase gasoline without paying any of the excise taxes or state taxes. So it saves money over the course of the year. Unfortunately, they, the last check we sent them, they informed me that they destroyed, which I was trying to figure out why, because this, so this is actually like two and a half months worth of payments. They, it was a bizarre phone conversation, because they sent me an email saying we hadn't paid, and I gave them the check number and everything, and they said, no, if that office gets that stuff, they just destroy it. And I'm like, well, I, I couldn't even follow the logic of that, but, so this is, we're canceling the first check and then sending this with the two checks, and if they destroy it again, I don't know, maybe we'll start paying the tax again. It's, yeah, it was hard to understand their logic in that. It went, got shuttled to the wrong place, so they just destroyed it.
Okay.
They have a tax shredder.
Yeah.
A couple of items I overlooked here, the People's Bank, there's $2,279.
Yeah, that's, that's the water improvement loans, those are the revolving fund loans for the, the pipeline that went up down by your house, Ken, up the side street, help me out with the name.
What, that's really dry?
Yes, yes.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand, it's like water bonded payments?
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay, got it. All right, any other discussion on check warrant 19? All in favor of approving check warrant 19, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Check warrant 19, $4,154,179.05 is approved, 5-0-0. I believe that's it on the warrants. And that takes us to public comments for the end of the meeting, any public comments? Okay, reviewing action items. We talked about, given that our emergency action for town meeting, that we want to put out every, put out the word every way we can think of to let people know, to provide their input on the budget to the select board before we vote on the budget in mid-January. We also are going to put on the agenda for next time, the Solid Waste Alliance Agreement, once we figure out how, how long the term is on that. Anything else we promised to do that I didn't catch? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
One question, Tim. When have we got to decide to have moving, moving or keeping the march meeting at the
We, we decided not to move the meeting, we decided instead to hold the ballot by, hold the, the march meeting by Australian ballot, the vote for it.
Yeah, no, I know we did that, but I, I didn't, I guess I'd list it, we were going to keep it the regular date.
Our, we have not decided to, to change the date, it was kind of an either or proposition, there was an option to put, move it to a later date, I don't think anyone liked that option, and so we did, we did not do that. At this point, we don't have that option. If we did that, we would be waiting for the legislature to give us that authority as one of their first acts when they meet in January, and then we would have to rush that through. Any other business? I, I left off the agenda this time, other business, anything else anyone has? All right. Remind me, did we get a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Obol.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to adjourning? All right, we stand adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.